Uh, good morning, everybody. It's Wednesday, January thirty first. Uh, nine AM, we'll start our work session. Uh, so we've got a conversation. About public comment in the meeting. Should we wait till we have that conversation to change things? Maybe just so, so right now, we're gonna allow public comment for things that don't have to do with the agenda. And then we'll talk a little bit more about that as we get to the next. Next thing, does anybody have anything to talk about? Well, I guess just anything to talk about for today, but we'll elaborate on it later. Anybody have anything? No? Okay. All right, Andy?
Yeah, the first time here you have is a request to extend the builder's risk policy at the Justice Center project. Through the estimated completion date, which is uh, late June. This particular extension runs through July ninth. There's an action needed on this. It's a timeliness matter. Uh, the upfront cost that you'd be approving is twenty six thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars with a minimum. Uh, premium of twenty two thousand seven seventy-five. If we could complete the project early, there could be a refund for whatever that difference might be.
Perfect. Yes, I'll make a motion to uh, pass the builder's policy for twenty six thousand two sixty-four.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Are you here, Representative Carey?
I am Carey for the day.
We care about Jordan.
Yeah, I don't know. It just says to present the letter. I think you guys already have the letter. I know that Carrie made a presentation to you about uh, the situation on measure one ten and the um. Proposal by the uh, legislative committee of what uh, what they call the reform for that. Um, law enforcement is opposed to that and has been from the start. Uh, because it does nothing to address the uh, treatment issue. It just kind of makes things worse than what we've already got. So what we were asking is that um, uh, county courts or county commissions um, send a letter to the uh, legislature. To express um, their desire to uh, follow what um. The sheriffs and chiefs and the DAs and league Oregon cities have um, outlined to them. In the framework that we presented to the legislative committee. Um, basically, they're wanting to make it a class C misdemeanor. I know probably Kerry talked about this in the presentation. They wanna make it a classy misdemeanor and tie to a deflection program. Which means that um, they would still have the option to go to treatment and it's still voluntary. And so far, that voluntary uh, option has not worked with measure one ten over the last two years. It's been a failure all the way around. And this just ties one more thing to it. It's a little bit, well, it puts a lot more liability on law enforcement because uh, now they wanna tie that to where we can actually search them. Prior to the arrest, which is a real problem. And that's gonna lead to um. Lawsuits down the road against law enforcement and against agencies. And so I think it's a bad, a bad policy, a bad proposal. And like I said, uh, OSSA, OCP and uh, the DAs and LLC, legal Oregon cities. Have proposed the option of a class A misdemeanor with mandatory treatment attached to the uh, community corrections. Part of that, so that they would be held accountable to go to treatment and not just on their own. They would be required to do that as part of probation. It's not to fill up the jails. We just not, we do not want to put them in the jail because jail is not the issue. They need to get into treatment. And the proposal that the legislator has has no option for mandatory treatment. So anyway, you have the letter. Um, the opening gavel for the session starts Monday morning. Um, I sent out yesterday, I think all of your mother got the email addresses that I sent uh, for the committee. So probably best if you send that out by email. It's just such a late date now, so. You guys have any questions with me?
No. Thank you for your complaining again and favor.
Yeah, I wish we could do more really. That, that AOC meaning what it was, what one four or something. There's a lot of liberals, a lot of feel-good in there. Nobody that wanted. Whip the whip.
But you know that seventy percent of the population has said that measure one ten has got to be reformed. One way or another, and this is what they're saying is their attempt to reform it, but it is not doing it. It is not making anything required for treatment. No, it's an option. You can go if you want.
Yeah, but to your point, they need to reform it. And actually, they need to actually reform it and, and fix the situation, not just put a fancy bow on it and wrap it up in the same garbage.
The, the senator presenting it, I thought was very weak.
It's a, it's a feel-good policy that they're presenting. It's a feel-good to say, hey, we're doing something.
No, they're not doing anything.
The, the main, the bottom line here is treatment to get people off drugs. And this does not do that.
Do we know timing on getting the letter out? Is it something that wants, we wanted to send out ASAP or next week?
Well, I think it probably best get it out at the other time before the session starts, but.
Yeah, should we have a motion to sign a letter?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think we want, it's a short session and leave it out.
I make the motion to uh, sign the letter and send it out by email and physical to the appropriate place.
Or free address.
Addresses.
Addresses.
Same.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
And thank you for your work, John.
Well, thank you guys. I appreciate your, your support of that.
Is Andy here?
He's not. No, he's not.
Thank you, Ron, again.
What am I doing?
You're doing.
Uh, this is just a reoccurring.
Yeah, this is.
A reoccurring grant that we do for emergency management. Um. And. Andy has handled all this, but for some reason, he had to go to Salem today to pick up vehicles. Uh, but this is a reoccurring grant that we have that um, we have to uh, ask uh, for your approval on. Because it has to uh, keep our emergency management system running. Uh, the grant amount is sixty-six thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars. And let's get started with the emergency management uh, through. Okay, so it comes from the twenty twenty-three program.
Are those mass funds that have been budgeted?
Yeah, this is just the acceptance of the grant, right?
And commissioners, I had a conversation with Christine uh, yesterday. Apparently, this grant is due today. So could I ask if there would be a motion to approve the emergency management performance grants? Number ninety-seven point oh two four, two ninety-seven oh four two. Um, and we'll send it off to um. Let's see, OD um, for full execution.
So.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Well, it is actually, and I have a big, I have a letters big.
Here's, here's another list of addresses for that. Sarah, did you get the email that I sent out yesterday? I think they're probably duplicated in there.
Yes, good morning. So we have a renewal for our new canics. That is our cloud disaster recovery platform. Some annual renewal for forty thousand one oh eight one two in the budget. Fits with the model of going forward. I'm trying to do an annual renewal. Some of our stuff right now is three and bringing them down to one to give us options in the future. And this isn't annual renewal.
Perfect. Is this something that you need passed today or can it go?
Um, yeah, I figured we'd get on the work session and then for the next.
Well, here are you taking the reins today. Taking the reins was uh, sick.
No, there.
Yeah, not fun.
Um, sure, monthly update, building residential side is still a little slow, about fifty percent or so. Um, commercial is still going strong, even though there's, you know, a lot of the data centers, you know, we got CCL five six pretty much wrapped up. Um, news for you guys on uh, Apple is, again, we've had a conversation with them over the last few months. They're transitioning the existing building they've got built now. Um, the guys are up there now with uh, fire department doing some suppression acceptance testing. Uh, to try to get at least half of that building uh, with holders. So. With Apple and Holder, we are transitioning and gonna go with a temp CFO for half the building because it's ready. But the other half are living in a core shell stage. Uh, sounds like Boris would have that conversation with them. They're gonna come in and make a uh, plan and submit tenant agreement packages to finish the build out of the other half, but. Um, for you guys to note that, you know, we're getting closer to trying over at least a temp CFO occupancy for half of Apple. Inspections, you know, still averaging eight hundred to a thousand a month. Like I said, the commercial side, other than just our normal data centers, has still been, been going pretty strong. Um, in addition to these larger projects, you see they're incoming or under review. Few more have been added this week. We got the Humane Society Dog Wing added, uh, St. Vincent de Paul Food Bank, where that's we're processing that one. One of the notable city land use applications was a fuel station restaurant. Uh, sounds like maybe a food cart up there on Tom McCall Road. We haven't seen it in the building department yet, but it's since made it through end use approval. Um, and then Will just said that you guys have any questions on any of the planning stuff that uh, you wouldn't have, you guys, if you guys didn't want to get back and say. Any questions for me?
No, I don't think they do.
Justice Center sworn along, looking great.
Yeah.
Yeah, looking real good.
I really like the rock in there.
I do too.
At the back and resembles the courthouse level.
Yeah. Yep. And that project's gone smooth so far, so I mean, it's. We have our headache projects at times, but. Got a handful right now that aren't really driving my staff crazy, so. Yeah, third floor is sheet rock painted in the cabin. You're going second floor, same little, it's about moving down into the sheriff's area and. Everyone with the sheet rocking and, coming up. So it's all moving on pretty long. Yeah, the generator, that's a very long wait. It will be, you know, maybe next week. It's been shipped, so that's eighteen minutes. Uh, leave time on that. Kirby's been great to work with, so you know, with Roger and Amber there. So, you know, having those type of project managers on the, on that side of the fence makes our, you know, it really makes our team. You know, it makes things a lot smoother for us. So we appreciate that. I think that's about all I got as far as bigger projects. I mean. Um, we have that. I've had a couple of phone calls regarding some deep sewer inspection type of coordination. For a project out in Adderley Highway. Um, it's an apartment complex. We have not seen plans yet, but apparently plans are being distributed. For bid purposes, which is gonna interface with our department because it's gonna be deep sewer. And anytime you get into that, you know, it's scheduling inspection and testing is because you've got a large of an transition open, but. We haven't seen anything on that, at least even in civil package. So, sounds like that one's going. We didn't expect in the two apartments last two years. I knew I was, I'm not sure exactly what they had going on there, but. Sounds like somebody might be getting close to at least getting bids.
Yeah, and I'll share that Kirby's enjoyed working with the Kirk County, the old part of the fall scene. We work with many of them all over. They always have nice things to say about this, we even wish we had things done and willingness to help. Good, that's. Share their thoughts.
It's kind of, you know, I mean, as we, as we grow, sheriff can, you know, turn it on that too. It gets, it gets way more difficult. We've got way more contractors, way more projects, way more population, way more, way more trouble. And it, it, it makes it harder for us to allow that holding down value field. Um, just because there's so much more, you gotta have a more consistent platform. And you know, sometimes the. Individuals that have been around a long time that are used to a lot smaller jurisdiction or a lot, you know, less people. You know, you have to tighten things up to make efficiencies and with efficiencies, sometimes you can lose that personal feel and we still try to keep that as best we can.
So what happened with our back gate?
You had an alarm on, but. I think that's it. She doesn't have anything else.
I know, there's, there's.
All right, thanks, guys.
So we uh, have been working all the best. Core. Core is organization has been started with the ideas of bringing the regional areas. Shutes County together for a training facility. It started out as a um. Area to be coordinated emergency response and recovery in streaming, but also a training and preparedness for public safety and. Emergency services. And it's based on the region of central Oregon in relationship to. Cascadia events and forest fires and things will be kind of an area that. If there's a natural disaster in the state of Oregon, Krieger Center Oregon is probably the least. There will, will stand the most better chance of surviving. Um, so we have been working with them. They have, they have two. Uh, we are an associate member. Uh, there is our core partner. Core partners are participating in providing uh, by a lot of funding. Um, and then there's executive council that over season. We are an associate partner. Um, we um. Are supporting it a little bit to kind of into the sum of thirty-five, thirty-six hundred dollars a year. Um, we haven't made those payments yet, but we will continue to agree. And out of the associate partners, they appoint two members to be on the executive council. And one of those members is in Kirk County, myself, that's been serving on this uh, executive council. Um, we've been operating under an MOU that we signed quite some time ago and now it's coming through an IGA. Um, we continue with uh, the IGA is being presented now before us today to get permission to sign. Um, because it needs to uh, be in before our work session. Um, it's been reviewed by Gary a lot of times. Um, and I think we have this uh, blessing um, that needs our credit that we need. So that is my, there are twenty-six members on this. Um, I think in coming up into the future. They want to. Have all of the emergency services, uh, services be part of this group. Um, and so I think that sometime in the future, um, probably the sheriff would. This would be under the sheriff. The county can still be, you know, named in this as part of the group. But um, I think that, you know, for the consolidation and using it mostly for um. Room services. And just because we sign it doesn't mean that we have to pay um, you know, in exorbitant fees. We elected not to because we're. Uh, have a lot going on for Justice Center and things that we're doing. And when they do, they're, what they're working now on their funding. Uh, model is pertains to FTEs. And I got some information from the sheriff uh, the other day and how many FTEs that they would have that would attend. And based on that is how they will start asking for funding from the core partner. And with that, that would take us up, if we were a core partner, that would take us up into about twenty-seven thousand.
One of the opportunities to start training deputies over on the side of mountains, so we're going to send them to. I, I know, I, I talked to the governor about that. If this thing, when this thing gets up and running. It seems like it would be a really good opportunity to expand that ability to train because talking to sheriff and under sheriff, that's some, a huge problem. And it takes forever to get these folks trained. And it'd be nice to not have to drive three hours to do it.
Yeah, and that, and that's part of what they're planning on doing. When this originally started, it was just like the emergency services. Um, and then it expanded to the law enforcement. And then it expanded to local law enforcement. And then it expanded to the federal and state. Um, all the different law enforcement provisions of that. It's also turned into a B for fire facilities with fire training grounds and exact course for driving and then. There, you know, it, it's turned into the a pretty big project on three hundred plus acres and. Shute County has um, given the property and uh. They are seeking funding. They can buy a lot of grants for the open state and local. And CYC is in, is making permanent parting this one year forward.
So when this originally came out, they contacted the sheriff's office and wanted all the sheriffs and chiefs to be part of the executive committee. But the contract or the letter, the MOU that they had at the time was very open-ended. They wanted you to sign on saying that you would commit the financial support of this. And they had no dollar amount attached to it. But I wasn't, wouldn't do that. And that's when I talked to you and you went as associate member, which was reduced amount, but. Um, back to your question about whether we could train uh, here locally, we um. Uh, the, the, it would be great if we could do that. And it would save travel time for our people on this side of the mountain going all the way to the other side. Uh, the problem with that right now currently is uh, that's been tried during the time the academy was short on staffing. Uh, had too many people backlogged to get into the academy. Uh, we talked about doing satellite academies around the state, mostly in the Portland area. But the logistics of that, you know, having staffing to put these academies on, having consistence. Consistency with the agenda that would be in taught. Um, it ended up just not being a, a, a deal. Because you couldn't guarantee that they get the same training at the satellite academies as they are on the campus and same. And so um, that went away. But if we had a set program, but then you're gonna have to have a lot of staff to manage this over here. And that's, that's kind of what's up in the air, I think, is how it's gonna be managed down the road. I'm in favor of it, obviously, but it'd be great for us to send our staff there, but uh, it's gonna be a huge lift financially, I think.
And it's, you know, it's still in the ground. It's gone a long time before it gets into towards something that.
So Brian's been involved in it from pretty much the start. But um, I've asked Bill and um. Andy Pearson to be involved going forward so we can have input from the sheriff's office as well. Well, you've been doing it. We need to, got more people involved if we're gonna move forward with this.
But I think, you know, we're not technically required to pay anything, but I think we'll. Reasonable first that you continue to follow our payments system. Be supportive of our regional law enforcement training and training.
And I don't know what was the original or what's the situation is right now, but originally. That if we, if we paid into this financially, we could send people there for training for free. But if we didn't support it financially, we'd have to pay as a use, a user fee as we used it. So that would be something to consider a lot, so.
And I, you know, it's gonna be a pretty expensive facility to operate. And then all of that hasn't been figured out yet. And there's suggestions and ideas on how to do it and whether the higher ones that donate the most have the first right to be training. Their first aid and a lot of different things of them. But it's going to take um, some type of a. A positive, long-term finance method to be able to um, to operate.
Yeah.
But then that's one of the reasons I broke it out into, you know, including all the federal and state and. Law enforcement and, and fire.
And I think that's why they brought in the state and federal agencies as well to have finance and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think anybody should expect to get uh, free training for twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah.
No, I think it's, it'll be hundred to thousands to maintain that on really basis. Great, good for us all.
So do you need a motion today because they were sitting, is it, is it this immediate or this is a consent?
No, I need a motion today, yes.
You sign that, the IGA, and then are we putting up money or?
Um, yeah, we're putting up.
Thirty-eight hundred or?
Yeah, thirty-six, something. Thirty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-four, forty-five. I, I feel a little more adapt because we were supposed to have them last year.
Oh, we've got that one in process.
So then we're budgeted and we're fine with that?
Yes.
Okay, then I make, I should have not whipped that past. I make a uh, motion to. Sign the IGA with central Oregon ready, responsive and resilient core three project. With a payment of our, is it annual dues or? Uh, payment of whatever that three, the, yeah, the three thousand six, what I quoted.
Okay, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You see, you got some.
Okay, this is, yeah, this is not, this is kind of just an information for us all to be able to understand as wolves in the county. And I had asked ODFW how many mountain lions John Blazer had gotten. And they had told me throughout, over the last three years, three per year. Two of them were safeties. A safety lion is. I've called, he's laying on my front porch, basically. That's kind of a simplified thing. And ODFW takes over the fees. John Blazer called me yesterday and he is not good at sending in his factual data. He actually got eight lions last year. He does cougar and bears for the county. We pay him fifty-four thousand in quarterly payments. And uh, so in the meantime, in your package, you have a letter from Ellie Gage where she's talking about wildlife services. The difference between John, who's a private contractor, if he's running a lion on my property. And it crosses into public or to other private ground, he can't pursue it. Wildlife services can. Which that's a bonus. Wildlife services also takes care of in-town skunks and things like that. But I see that John Blazer had on his reports that he'd taken care of five skunks in Primeville. So we're gonna probably be asked at one time, and if you look at Ellie's thing. A full-time wildlife uh, services guy would be a hundred and forty-five thousand. She'd like to split it, split it with the shoots, so we would be on the hook for seventy-two thousand five hundred. And my, my concern is on top of John Blazer's, that's a lot of money. So they're still looking for grants. They're still looking for funding. One of the positives on a wildlife services agent is that he can confirm a wolf kill, which would take a little bit of weight off of the sheriffs. But then again, they're federal agents and there's a trust issue. So you have producers that don't want that person on, producers that like John. I asked John, would you take on wolves? He was, he Washington me and didn't say yes. He didn't say no. And like I say, this is basically just to get the information to you. If there's any questions, you have his contract. I asked Eric if it could be terminated. And there were three, I believe, three different ways that John's contract could be terminated. If we so decide to do that. But again, this is Ellie's gonna come. But again, this is Ellie's gonna come. This is just information for us to have. And if there's any questions I need to pursue, we're having a. Meeting on February eighth at the Clover Building from one to three. And the federal from uh Bend is coming and is going to present. What the latest wolf. I don't know what you call it, study or finding is. Last year, they delisted the wolf on this side of three ninety-five. Again, the environmental group slapped a lawsuit, so he went right back to non-terminal. Things. And again, you've got to look at seventy-four thousand. Let's say we do go half seventy-two five, is that something we want when really there's no legal removal? This is all just again, information to get to you, or if there's any questions, we can talk about it legally and uh. I don't really think I, I think I've covered it. I don't think there's much more to say. Bill.
One thing I'd like to add to that too is is that um so Friday, the U S Department of Fish and Wildlife is. Um, gonna submit their proposal on whether what they're gonna do with them for the next biennium for. Whether they're gonna de-list them or lessen it or or what that looks like. That comes out this September Friday. Um, now, one thing that I would add to wildlife services as opposed to private contractor. Um, and again, I'm not saying anything bad about John, but um when these wolves are de-listed, wildlife services, um, and O D F and W. But it's mostly predominantly wildlife services are the only ones that have the ability to manage the wolves. When the management tool comes, and so I think a proactive approach and getting that in place early is gonna be paramount for when they do get enlisted and have the ability to manage.
Thank you. Uh, I got a little update. Uh, working with the Wolf Committee, we're. We did a subcommittee to see what ranchers wanted. It wasn't super conclusive. So we've put together a kind of a survey to send out to the ranchers. Um, I think, I'm not sure, but it's gonna be over a certain acreage, so we make sure we're talking to people that are actually affected by the wolves. And uh, we wanna see kinda what services they they would like to see. In in the area, because to me that we can have all the great theories. In the world of what is what's good for them, but I I wanna make sure that they have a lot of say. In what what's going on up there.
And there's a lot of trust issues. I know Bill said to me, well, they're calling us. Well, they're calling you because they trust you. Nobody really wants the federal government and O D F and W on their ground. There's a lot of trust in this. And the other thing that's very frustrating is we have a wolf biologist that's over here in Primeville. Who only, you know, tells you there's the two colored wolves. And we had pictures of four. We have, I mean, they're like, they're way more wool to this guy wants to admit. And I don't understand why he doesn't admit it, but we have a much more severe problem. Than what is being told to us by. So this is again, this is just to get it out here, to get us thinking about it, to get us thinking about what money we might need to do that way. And uh, it's just like I say, no decision, just an informational.
Think we have uh Tim Dubu from the Natural Resource Committee, who's got a question.
Perfect.
So, yeah, this is Tim. I might suggest uh. That the court also talked to uh the landfill and the airport. Because one of the services that uh APIS does provide is issues like bird uh. Damage, bird conflicts. Uh, and not knowing what those issues might be at the landfill and the airport, it. Might be another duty that an APIS officer might. Uh, have in their job description in addition to the skunks, the. The uh rock chucks, the wolves, the cougars and the bears.
And along that note, Tim, so in Prairie City, ODOT had some area and they made it into a compost. For because one of the important things is to get rid of your carcasses. And they made it into a compost where they could, the ranchers or ODOT could take carcasses and they composted it, which. Jackie was, has has, I think they talked to Jackie about, I think Ellie's talked to him. But one of our problems at the landfill is that we're four hundred ton. Over our allotted. I guess I organic out. Carcass Jackie could maybe answer that better, but that was one of the things. So that is something that we're gonna have to think about down the road. Is carcass removal and where we go with them.
Agreed.
Yeah, I think we're good.
All right, another one.
It's me. Okay, the next, so the next thing is, is where I come from and at Crete County Planning Department. We have, I'm just gonna talk about the planning commission. Staff presents a project. The applicant talks and then we ask for public testimony, yea, nay, or neutral. One of the things that I noticed here at county court is you have a comment previous. Which is not on the agenda and then we had talked about putting something in the in the end. I don't feel the people are validated by being able to give us their comment during the project that we're talking about. I'd like to see that change. That does put weight on the chair. You're gonna have to limit it to three minutes. At, you know, in San Luis County, we have a thing and it starts green and it goes green, yellow, red, and when it's red, the hook comes out and. Flings you off of the podium, but I think you can still move along. And I think you can validate our citizenship by being able to comment on projects directly. And one of the things I noticed at planning commission is that you think you read all your material, you think you have a good presentation and you you kinda have it in your head. And then one person steps up and makes a comment and you realize, I need Eric, I need legal to look into this or, you know, I maybe need to think about. So there are things that come up at that individual project by what people say that can change. Your opinion or your way of thinking. And I feel that we're not. Letting the public, if you if you're taking the time to come to a meeting at nine in the morning. You feel strongly about it and I feel that we should be listening to their comments. So I kinda would like to try this and see if it gets to be. Unruly. I know that Seth has said to me that, you know, we had a lot of people that were complaining. Again, that puts it on the chair, that you're just gonna have to come down with the gavel and say, you know, this isn't pertinent to this project. You know, you have three minutes, three minutes is adequate to get your point across. The other thing I've done as a chair is say if you agree with Sarah, everyone raise your hand. I don't need you all to, and don't read me anything that you've already written to me.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, with with the right. Uh, kind of rules in place, I think this can move along and I think it can be a benefit not only for the. Citizens but for the court also. So that's my take on it.
Yeah, no, it makes sense to me.
And I don't know where we go and how we change it. Do we, I I don't know whether we make a motion. I'm not sure how that works.
Yeah, I don't think for this that you need a motion. I think what you can do is just, you know, direct staff when they prepare the agenda. Um. The public notice in the agenda format. That there be entries saying something like public comment or invited. Um, and then when you actually run meetings, you know, you have a presentation with the staff. And then you guys just remember, okay, now we're inviting a public comment. And as you said.
And then there's a staff rebuttal if needed. You know, and then, yeah, that that's just my take. I don't feel that we're. Taking our public, I I feel we need to have more interaction.
Yeah, no, I I think it, I think it's a fair point and I think this.
Again, it puts a little bit more weight on you to keep it going and to keep it on track, but I don't think it's hard. I think once you establish, you kind of know. They kind of know everybody follows it. That's I, and I, will it add time? Yeah, but if it's a controversial project, it's controversial project.
Yeah, it's been something that people care about them.
Yeah, and they're taking their time out of their day to come and tell us, and I think it's important. Like I said, don't read us your letter, we've read it, just what your new information is.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, are we good then?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, I guess we're doing it.
Just to clarify, did you want public comment also at the end of the meeting? And I'm just looking at the agenda in terms of preparation. If we wanna have that as an agenda item or not.
Why not? I don't see any reason not to. I mean, if if people have the fire.
Yeah, just uh, just food for thought. It looks like what the city of Primeville does is they have one. Section for public comment at the beginning of the meeting for items that are on the agenda. And then at the end of the meeting, they have a second for items that are not on the agenda. So if somebody says. You know, I I think at the next meeting you should talk about. I don't know, annexing the state of Texas. Um, you know, that's not on the agenda, but that would be the opportunity for, just food for thought.
So so since you're you're doing on the agenda, you would eliminate the first public comment because they can actually comment when that agenda item comes up.
Okay.
So then we would just go ahead and at the end of the meeting say, is there any public comment on items?
Any other option, any other items that people want to talk about?
And then from there, we could work on if we wanted to put on agenda. I don't think I wanna annex Texas, but.
Yeah, yeah, I just give you some feedback. I I would suggest against. Having that public comment at the end of the meeting. You guys go through executive sessions, you may be into those hour, two hours, you're coming out. There is no public, there is no public comment. Now, they've they've since left. So I would encourage you, you know, go ahead and do what you've done, the the meeting. The difference being that the beginning of the meeting. Is to anything that's not on the agenda.
Yeah.
For one of your comments now, we can take those and then, you know, dispense with them and. And then as you went through the meeting, you're taking the comments, clearing the discussion items. Uh, and then we go executive session where we close the meeting. That gives, I think, uh, to me, that's the cleanest way and. Shows that you're wanting to get input on items that aren't on the agenda that I think again at the end of the meeting. Oftentimes would just not feasible.
Yeah, no, I I think that's a fair point. Um, so you would, so what you're saying is for the meeting would be. Any additional, any additional within reason.
Any items not on the agenda.
Any items not on the agenda.
Yeah.
And then um, I would go through, you would have the public comment on each uh. And is this work sessions and? Um, court meetings or is it uh, one or the other? I I'm either way.
I would say for the business meetings.
Uh huh.
The work sessions. Yeah, you may want to. Think about that a little bit, or we can think about that a little bit more. Um, you know, it's a more open dialogue, um, and, you know, typically it's amongst yourselves and. Staff, you know, talking through policy-related issues that you've not yet made any type of direction on what you're wanting to present, present to the public. Um. You have open comment now, people can make those comments, they've got the packet materials that they wanted that to be something you wanted to consider. I think it facilitate the conversation much more. Cause you're not having a discussion at the at a court meeting, it's a business decision process. Here, it's a dialogue. You know, most, you know, I think an an audience of your choosing, if you wanted to bring somebody in to that discussion. You know, uh, let's say a core three type of where you're having a conversation about the contract or about the scope of that, you'd be bringing them in to have. Conversation of what's involved. Um, you know, the general public per se, I think, you know, getting their comments early and their thinking. And before the meeting, I think would be most. Facilitate the conversation, I think, the most. You can always invite them, you know, if they're there to.
And if you're on a work session and you have another meeting, you can always. Come in to our offices and have conversations with us. Between that, if if there's something that's really, you you see something comes up in the work session that you wanna weigh in on. It's not like you're making a final decision.
We could just try county court. It's a change.
Yeah.
And we can just try it. And like I say, kind of run it a little bit like we do planning and then. And then from there, work work out. It's just, it's, it's just a chance to let people speak and I feel that's important.
And one of the thing, I don't know if you're doing this with the planning commission or not, but one of the things, you know, I've seen. Uh, utilized as well is speakers that want to speak. There's a card that's, as you sign in, you submit your card. Saying you wanna speak, the issue you wanna speak about, all that is gathered and submitted, you know, to the chair. So you have that information. And you can call on the speakers.
Which we probably should do. I don't think we, I I can't remember if if planning has. Three different colors or what, uh, because they submit it to Mike, but that is something where you just have those forms in the back. And once people understand and then you have it in front of you, so you know exactly who you have, you organize it, you know exactly. How many people you have speaking on that thing.
And maybe give them a little raise period as they're learning to.
Oh, well, yeah.
Raise hands, raise hands in the beginning, but we'll, as we start, we'll just say, hey, as as we do this, we're gonna.
Yeah.
We're gonna head to the direction of. Having cards to sign up.
Only thing about the paper that is good is it's good for the secretary because they have their name, they have their email address. They have the information about it, whereas I stand up and go, and I don't get catch the name or something. So that is one good thing, having it in front of you to give to the secretary and it's part of the record. So that would be probably something we would wanna start right away. Just because it becomes a matter of record at that point. That makes it easier for you. Otherwise, you're asking them how to spell their name and all of that. And that's nothing. That's just a matter of copying their paper and just having it sit there at the desk with the agenda.
Yeah, we can, you know, talk through how we can legislatively incorporate that, but I think that would be helpful. You know, again, for the points you mentioned is, as well as just knowing if you're gonna have somebody speak or or not speak on the night.
Yeah.
How about in regard to the consent agenda items?
Uh, those wouldn't be part of, you know, somebody at the beginning of the meeting, it's not on the agenda, it's a discussion items. So if somebody had something on the consent they wanted to object to or just make a point to, they could, under the. Opening public comment, address it there. And the the wording will, I think, try to utilize here is. If it's not on the discussion agenda.
What I've seen in the past, people brought up at the beginning of the meeting. That they have questions about a consent agenda, not recently, but I in the past I've seen them. Say, you know, what about consent agenda number four? And then we we a lot of times will just move it to, move it up to a discussion item. And then give, then they would have the opportunity to weigh in.
I think that would probably be the best is if there is a question and, yeah, you pull it. Put it in the other part of the meeting and then you address it and that gives them their answer.
Yes, we would, yeah. wording would be items not on the agenda or the consent agenda. Of items that are on the consent agenda or not. On the.
Discussion.
Discussion. Yeah. If that's right.
We'll get the hang of it pretty quick too.
Oh, yeah. I I will have a learning curve, but at least it's letting people interact and be able to give their comment and I feel that's important and I feel it. Kinda, it just, yeah, it just, it's just important. So thank you, well, all of you for for uh.
Thank you for coming up with the idea.
Well, but you may just shoot me after this, but anyway, hopefully not. Hopefully I have a sheriff escort over there to protect me.
All right, holiday schedule. Was there any questions about that?
Holidays go away, John.
Yeah.
The fact that we received in that department.
Yeah. This seems to be a a deal. I'm not sure why it's a deal. And your holidays are communicated. In contracts and elsewhere by policy. Uh, I think the issue here is. Related to the Christmas Eve and how that's handled on. Uh, how how you want that handled, if you want it to be how it's been done in the past. Typically, as I understand it is. Comes a departmental operational thing and handled when we get to that point of the year. Um, apparently there was some discussion here. Um. A few years ago that that became a thing. What I'd love to do is see it become a a nonthing in in terms of that we don't have to bring it back every single year. So. You know, from a planning standpoint, do we just keep it the way it's been, which is it's a discretionary type of thing? Or is it gonna be something that is recognized as. A half-day off on whatever, you know, days. That uh of the week, you know, whether it's like a Thursday, Friday, Wednesday, you know, whatever it may be that you would say vote when it falls on those days. That Christmas Eve holiday, that would be recognized as a half-day holiday. That would be something that would. Trans into the sheriff's contract, the road contract, and then all non-representative, if that's what you wanted to do. But, you know, that comes with a cost, versus the way it's now. It's, again, a discretionary type of thing with no, no outright commitment.
The only thing, and I I don't know exactly. We have to talk to Cheryl, but I know that there's certain departments that have to. Have a plan on that so that they can get the information.
Cheryl would be one of those departments that has to.
Just that you can't just say that afternoon. We're going home. And then that puts her in a position where she's the duck.
She has her hands up, Cheryl has her hands up, so she's perfect.
So Seth is correct, the statute required. Uh, there was some changes to it, but it did require the clerk's office to be open certain hours. At the beginning of the day and certain hours at the end of the day unless it was a county holiday. Uh, or, you know, state or federal holiday. That's why we had made it an official holiday. And closed at noon. Statute changed last year and it does allow us a little bit more flexibility. So I think if you, I'll choose to not, um, make it an official holiday. I would have the discretion at being able to, you know, close early. I I think that's changed enough that I think I'm okay. Um, last I reviewed it, it looked like I was okay to make that decision, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if I remember, the district attorney's office, they're required to be open as long as the circuit court is open. And of course, we don't have any same on the circuit court is open, so. There may be some, sometimes when the county decides, the county's closed, they have to stay open. Imagine maybe across there.
So it kind of comes back to discretion, I think, is the answer.
Yeah.
I agree to get them the half day off, in my opinion, but. Like what he's saying, I mean, how do you do that and when the district attorney has to stay open, so. Basically, across the board, it's better to have one policy than to have. So to leave it at discretion of departments, I doubt circuit courts open on Christmas Eve, but. We don't know.
Yeah, I mean, you certainly could say, you know, those departments which can. Close early are able to, and those that can't aren't, you could decide that.
What if they do it ahead of time though? Because when we were talking about, when I'm talking with them about. Closing or opening late. They were not saying, well, we can't come in late. Because the circuit court might be open.
Yeah, I don't know.
So so I think if, maybe if they're similar to what the front used to be, where if it's planned.
Could be.
That, um. You might still be able to get through the process. I I don't know, I think that's just another.
You're speaking in terms of the weather closures that we've just recently had.
Yeah.
And we've had, I mean, we did what we did. And then you have the state that did what they did, and you know, I know when I'm communicating to Karen, you know, in terms of what we're authorizing. You know, she's getting back to me saying, well, the circuit court's, you know, closed for the day, so. You know, it it works out fine. Um, I I think, you know, from my perspective on this is at a policy level right now. The Christmas Eve holiday is not recognized as an official holiday anywhere. It's just, it's not. Anything. It's been discussed. In in this has come up now, I think, one, two or three years now in a row, and. It would be nice just to have a firm decision on how we want to treat this, whether. It's going to be a discretionary thing, and we can just get back to employees saying, as far as we're concerned right now. Everybody's working until the end of the day on the twenty fourth, that's the regular office hours. And as we get to that point, you know, this, you know, the department head will have the authority to operationally make that call. Or do you want it to be something that is different than that? But what? We need is the ability to have a firm answer back to the employees and that's consistent and isn't something. I would hope that an administrator, whoever's in this role, you know, coming back, shouldn't have to come back every year to ask this question.
So can we put something in that, uh, we would let them off at halftime Christmas Eve if. The department head with their discretion, and then that would cover anybody that needs to stay. I mean, can we just do that, that we approve that they go ahead and leave at noon on Christmas Eve, but. Now finance has something they've got to get out, so Christina says, I mean, can we do that? You kind of have to do across the board.
Well, I think the across the board would be the department is having that discretion, but you're planning to be open, the. In what folks are looking for, I mean, if it's a paid holiday or paid half day, that's what they're gonna get. And then you're, we no longer as department heads. You know, or staff have any discretion, and I mean, it's a done deal, it's just over and. And so it it's effectively giving an additional half day is if you went that direction. Um. The current. Method, I think, works, there's just some pushback, because it's. Then something that I think that, you know, has been allowed to be, oh, we'll create that as a holiday this year. As a half day, and I think there was, if I remember correctly, Sarah, you know, jump in, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe it's been something that. Had been done earlier in the year. People are looking to plan. Right? They have the ability now, they've got vacation. They can take the four hours of a full day off if they wanted to take that off to do their planning. The court just recently, you know, approved a policy which, you know. Give a brief update here in a second, that provided additional accrued vacation leave for employees that had previous experience. Comparable experience with, you know, the position that they have, so there's now more vacation. Being earned by a a pretty good chunk of folks that have, you know, been hired in the last ten years. So this would be yet more pay, or should say more, you know, paid time off. And that will again go not just to the regular non represented employees would be coming. Additional pay to the sheriff's office or additional time off, you know, to the sheriff's office, the road department, and in the sheriff's office situation. And likely out in in roads too, they would be having to figure out how to cover for for that time, so there's. There is an additional cost component that they're gonna realize because. You know, they just don't leave the streets open those four extra hours.
I think another reason that in the past we said it ahead of time was that if you were. A position that wasn't able to leave, I think you got some kind of additional pay, because I think it was not. Working with the sheriff's department, if you are working during a holiday, you get additional pay.
We work every day. Great, just because we we'll get PTO.
So we can change that, um, oh, I will, it was like one of the first couple of years I was here. Um, because the the sheriff's office did did that same benefit, but we want to weaken that, so we don't get holiday pay. Um, and we don't get, we don't have holiday bank of time anymore, and that's how. Uh, the sheriff's office gets so much more PTO accrual than the rest of the county, is because that's all rolled into one. And we don't get any additional benefit for holidays. Whereas if you're on schedule, you're expected to work.
Yeah. But, correct me if I'm wrong, though, when the court did add Juneteenth as a paid holiday. That became an extra PTO hours equivalent back to SL.
They did.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't, Stephanie Wilson actually did the the calculations on that, but I think it's. It 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 added, instead of giving that holiday, it added like point six, seven hours per month.
Right.
To the total banks.
Yeah. As an equivalent of eight hours and this would be, you know, equivalent of four hours to their PTO, so it would be, you know, across the organization.
So they would see in addition, if we were to make it an official date, it would, they would see it.
Yeah, everybody would get.
Yeah.
That benefit.
I I think that's the way to go. I I don't know why we would make it up in the air, and I I think it's better for people to plan and. The citizens to know ahead of time, you know, take care of. You know, research it, that that that, if they've got something last minute that they can get it done prior to that, not just show up at. A one off department and say, oh, well, they've decided they don't want to be here. I I don't see the downside.
Let me clarify, it would not be the ability for the department to close their doors discretionary. They would be slow enough that they could say skeleton crew. Were sticking around, everybody else, go ahead and go, that's the discretionary, you know, type of thing, you know. That would be in place under the way I think it, you know, was currently being utilized or or, you know, accounted for. If you want to change that, then, you know, we'd want to. Go to something that's, uh, formal in terms of the recognition of that as a holiday, and what are those specific days of the work week? Because if the twenty fourth falls on a Saturday or Sunday.
You don't have to worry about.
Be, you know, dealing with it. If it's a Monday, is that something? You know, they're off Tuesday, I mean, then they're coming to work for four hours. What's the point of coming Monday? That'll be the next thing. Um, you know, if it's, you know, so I I it's a. A little bit bigger issue than, let's just give them four hours, um. Is it, you know, does impact, you know, I mean, if it's a Friday. You know, a lot of people are gonna want to get out of here and they're gonna take their vacation time.
Right, and they have the ability to do that, so.
That's what I'm saying, they have that ability already to do that. The people that don't want to be here on the. Christmas Eve, they've got plenty of different paid ways to do that. That you've negotiated with the sheriff's office, you've negotiated with the road, and the rest of the employees have. What I would consider to be a very generous leave policy, you guys, you know, when you compare it to the private sector. You guys are what, eleven, twelve days of paid holidays present? Twelve with a floater. Plus minimum of, you know, basically, we're getting to, you know, close to three weeks, you know, accrued holiday pay from, you know, the beginning. And that's the equivalent of five weeks of paid leave. You know, during the course of a year, and. And right now, it it's worked, it's worked for all these years. It's just what. Seems to have been a a trend over the last, at least the last two or three, is this issue just keeps coming up as opposed to it just. Saying this is how we're gonna treat it and just do this every year.
Well, I think in the past, what would happen is. The judge would say. You know, we're not gonna work afternoon. But nobody would have planned it, and you would run into these other departments that needed more time, and it became an issue, and that's where we come to a point where. Is it something we want to continue to provide it to the employees? In fact, I think it's a nice thing to do, and gives them more opportunity to be with their families. And the way I've heard you describe it is. You can send most of your people home, but you're still gonna have to pick and choose and and make sure that there's at least some people there to to. You know, provide services, and I think if we want to allow them, if that's something we want to continue. Which I I think it's the right thing to do, I think it's a positive thing for employees, so I I think I would like to see it go forward, and why not then? Just set it up ahead of time, and but I guess.
Can you would be, just to clarify, because so a little confused there. Are we setting that half day as a holiday? That's really the question, if you want it to be a holiday, that means all the hours will be adjusted accordingly, with the exception potentially of Cheryl. And the DA's office, or are we putting in place? A discretionary type of thing where our business hours are business hours, that's why you haven't changed the business hours, so. Our department heads are having to.
Yeah, I think Cheryl's got another.
Thanks, Seth, I do have one more comment, so, um. I I personally and as a department head like the idea of it being a holiday and. We closing the office, a smaller offices have a hard time working as skeleton crew. We have, we don't, you know, we have some that can handle recording, some that handle elections, um, so, you know, I mean, you could. I have four, so you know, I could let maybe two go home. It's hard to, you know, run an office by yourself, so, or I could let my entire staff go and then I could stay, but. And I'm sure some of the other offices struggle with that too, but, you know, like, like you'd said too, it's it's easier for the public to know. Um, you know, what's happening, you'd hate for them to show up and the person that, you know, could help them, wouldn't be, wouldn't be there to help them. Um, if you're running off skeleton crews. Um, I don't, I don't know, I would just like to see it be a holiday, and it's something we've done since, I think sixteen was when we started that. I think something like that, so to me, we've, we've been giving it, and then it didn't apply this last year, and then. It feels to me like it would, is something that's being taken away.
I I think it was more on the books in sixteen, but I think it's been happening, it's been happening for as long as I've been here.
Oh, yeah, because, yeah, the prior judge, you bet, the prior judge and everybody would come around and, yeah, dismiss everybody at noon, but. Some of the offices, such as a clerk's office, couldn't do that unless it was deemed a holiday.
Yeah.
Right.
Um. If you're okay with this, tomorrow's department head meeting, we can just kind of get a sense of where this is, and I guess. Again, the thinking I'm having is it's not a holiday. On Saturdays and Sundays.
Sure.
That's a given.
Yeah.
You know, Monday through Friday, we can just see which of those days makes sense to make it, I would have quoted a holiday.
Yeah.
And then bring that back to you guys for for an action.
Yeah.
That work.
What are your thoughts?
Well, if they don't, I mean. If it turns into a holiday, then they could actually take that time off for the later day.
Truly, but it, you're saying we get five weeks of leave, which is very, you know, so there's kind of. Kind of convinced me yes, and then he kind of convinced me no, so I'm kind of like right here in the middle.
I could argue this point.
Well, yeah. That's the problem, you kind of make the good arguments on both sides, you gotta sway us one way, but yeah, that's my problem right now is. Five weeks is off, and so maybe this is our, this is the county, this is what we do, and maybe we keep it the way it is, but then, of course. I'd like to see people be home with their families, half day on Christmas Eve. It's just a hard, it's just a hard.
Yeah, I I'm I'm for putting it on the holiday, I I'm I'm.
I mean, yeah.
Not aggressively passionate about it, but, you know, I I just see it as something that has happened here for as long as I can remember. And it's a positive thing for employees, for our employees.
Well, everybody.
It's off for us year round, and if we can give them half a day at Christmas to spend with their family, I don't, I don't see the downside to that, and and giving them the. Knowledge ahead of time, and to Cheryl's point, the ability for a whole department to leave.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
I've been at the phone until five PM with nobody else in the building. All phone calls come to to me, everybody else was let off.
Sure.
We were open. Waiting for the phone call. The phone call that never came.
Yeah.
Um, including from the press, so, you know.
But like you take road, if it's snowing. We need clouds, I mean, you know, that's, you know, so there's, yeah, and the sheriff, hopefully you don't quit fighting crime just because it's Christmas Eve, but.
Well, I was just gonna say, the other, the other part of that, the other part of that is. You know, we, for ever since I've been here and way back before, um, on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, we gave the office staff. You know, half the staff to go home and on Christmas Eve and the other half to work. New Year's Eve, half the staff to go home and the other half to work. That if we, if we did that, we can't, that's fine for the office staff, but it doesn't account for the essential workers like patrol in jail. Who can't be off, so if you went to the holiday, they would get that half day added to their bank. And that way they would get the same.
And I think that's another reason that I I like the idea of making it a specific day.
Yeah, and then if they want, they could do it on Friday and.
Do whatever goes in their bank at that point.
Okay.
And it's a benefit for the roads also, our union contract is a little bit different in the sheriff's office. They they do get that holiday pay, and if it is a holiday, they go in, which accrues to you four minutes, seven and a half. So it's still a benefit, especially if they have that half a day as the five hours, because of our, we are having ten hours. Um, so they'll get that holiday pay, they'll pay five dollars.
This is Casey from the Fairgrounds, so, you know, we have events typically during those days, and my folks don't enjoy the same. Uh, benefits that the road and the sheriff has, because we don't, they're not collective negotiating, so. We end up working and we end up just losing out. Not me particularly, but the staff.
That's a good point, Casey.
Yeah, so I think we'll have a discussion about this, come back with, you know, something, I mean, you know, we. You know, again, the the concern I have on Monday. Is foreclosed a half a day. On a Monday, that's kind of odd.
Yeah.
Um. Frankly, being closed half a day on any day is kind of an odd, odd thing, um, but. Let us have a conversation and.
Go back, if I want this argument, I vote yes, if I want that argument, then I'll vote no, so, yeah, so, yeah, I agree. So, yeah, I agree, it's a tough one. And Casey makes a good point, you know, if you have to, you have to, that's just what you gotta do. Okay.
Yeah. Tim to do that.
I don't know how they get their hand up, I never did figure that out.
Hi, Tim.
Hey there, I just might add, an historical perspective, I think I've probably been a department head or with the county. Maybe now, now that Debbie Patterson's gone, maybe longer than anybody. Uh, the topic has always been a discretionary thing left up to department heads historically, I mean, this goes back to nineteen eighty-seven, so uh, that's when I showed up as a department head. Talked about Andy talking about sort of vacation or days off creep. Uh, the day after Thanksgiving used to be one of those sort of discretionary uh, operate under a skeleton crew, because that Friday, everybody's worried about shopping Black Friday and not really doing permits and other kind of stuff, so you know, usually in my case, it was me that was here on Friday and nobody else was on Friday. You know, if, uh, in Casey's standpoint, question, which is a really good one, his point, uh, again, it was kind of departmental discretion to say, hey, yeah, we knew you were working that afternoon. Everybody else kinda got the day off, so as a department head, we gave that person a different day that they could sort of go away. You know, another Friday that they got a half a day, so the discretionary stuff, of course, as personnel issues have changed over time, has kind of gone away, and we've kind of gone to, if it's not in the book, you don't do it kind of stuff, and and it's kinda takes away the, maybe the opportunities to, to manage people and, and keep them happy, but anyway, that's the historical deal, it always, it used to be departmental head discretion, and that's kinda gone away.
Yeah, so we'll talk about that. Hey, thank you, Tim. Uh, we'll talk about this tomorrow and get some feedback from you know, all of them in a consensus maybe to bring back to you.
I think that's a good idea, because maybe they even wanna go to their staff, I mean, that'd be a very good idea. Okay. Oh dear, okay.
So this, this says Andy, but I think it was, kinda came from a question that Suzie had, so.
Yes.
Well, it was just, are we moving forward? What are we doing here? Cause we do need to make some decisions. Are you doing a presentation, Andy, or?
Well, I can just give a brief overview of the materials that are in the packet to help inform your conversation.
Yeah.
But, uh, you have, uh, a November, uh, one second, I believe it is, November fourteenth, twenty-two memo with the qualification, schedule of qualification key responsibilities of a chief administrative officer position. Uh, this is coming from about nine, ten different entities, counties, uh, and also Prineville. And in that particular document was, you know, looking at all, as a summary, summation of all of the job descriptions around these various places for their chief administrative officer position, whatever that was. Uh, then, that was used together with the full copy of those job descriptions distributed to the, uh, court members, they individually uh, completed what they saw as their desire for this position. Uh, at that time, I aggregated that information, and that was the basis for moving forward with the job description that's part of my contract. And that is the January tenth memo, which shows that aggregation of the three different electeds together with the consensus that led to the job description. Then, another attachment here is the roles and responsibilities of commissioners, this would be all members, and it speaks of the various, uh, major categories. Uh, for example, legislative authority, budget and finance, governance, zoning and land use, the governing board of other districts, which is, you know, the Craig County Road District. You know, personnel, uh, responsibilities, the infrastructure and public works, the intergovernmental relations, community engagement. And then the role of the county judge, the board chair, this is, uh, a document that, uh, you know, Seth put together. And it lays out what he's, his, uh, view of the board chair, that county judge, uh, you know, in terms of what, uh, what he's been mostly involved with in, in doing and going forward. And then the last documents there is the job, or should be the org chart uh, with the with the county administrator role in place under the current agreement. And I think, you know, what I understood is, you know, you know, an opportunity here to, you know, with the county administrative role in place, and how those job responsibilities laid out is in looking at the roles and responsibilities of the county commissioners, the judge, board chair, however you wanted to have that dialogue. You know, there, and getting clarity on that, I think, again, looking at what if you're gonna choose to move forward with anything or not, it's related to the election. Whoever's, yeah, have a filing deadline, people knowing what, uh, what they're getting into, signing up for, whether it's a change or no change.
Well, why don't we first talk about county and, uh, uh, county administrator manager, I don't care what the name is, I did reach out to Prineville, and their salary range is one sixteen, uh, six oh four to one seventy-four nine hundred, so basically a hundred and seventeen to a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Cheryl was nice to, uh, to go ahead and provide us with Gillon County, and I believe Gillon County kind of fell into that. Pretty much into that, I wanna say they went one, yeah, they were like one seven, two, I wanna say maybe one forty-seven, not quite.
One thirty, but yeah, yeah, Gillon County's got a population of two thousand.
Yes, very small population. So I think looking at the city of Prineville is a good, and then they had a twenty-five thousand dollar bonus if prescribed metrics were met. So that is what is being offered across the street here. So that kinda gives us an idea, they call it the city manager. Again, I don't really care about the name, I just think that we need to move on this, because I don't, I feel that Andy would probably like to go on with his life, and it's something that we need to make a decision about, I'm not so concerned about, I mean, when you look at, there were two hundred people at the meeting, and you look that we have a population of twenty-three thousand. I'm not sure that going public is the way to go, or I, I, because there's a lot of education that needs to go into that. I'm not sure, but I need you guys to weigh in on this, now we've had some time to think, so.
Yeah.
We need to move forward.
I really like the Gillon County, I like the wording in that, because, um, I like the idea of this position supporting the county court. Not being, um, totally separate from the county court and only having that single employee, I think it's important. From what I've seen from the time that we've tried this change, that we need to be more involved with the county employees, and I'm not saying that we need to to manage them, I think that you need to have somebody in there to help with that management, but I, I, I think there should be extensive interaction between the county court and employees. And it shouldn't just be a single employee that the county court has, and I think, uh, that to me is extremely important, uh, from what I've seen and from my interactions with Andy and our work together and my work with different departments, I think things would be very difficult if you had elected officials that only interacted with one employee. Because I think there's so much information you can glean from department heads and conversations with different aspects of the county and different you know, the city, different things, and if we're only getting our information from one person, I think that puts it makes it extremely difficult for us to do our jobs, and so I think it's really important that we look at this as a support position, not as the person that takes over all of the managing.
Well, I think that open dialogue with all the staff, the student. Silent. I think you have to have a open door policy, I get busy. I begin to get kind of concerned when you take three elected officials and trying to put them in uh, working with the administrator and all of the department's hands and staff and secretary, that some points you get to undermining the administrator who is supposedly has qualifications and experience to actually work with those people and supervise staff. So I think there's some yeah, touching places there.
And I, and I totally agree, and you can't have someone that goes over and, and I'm just gonna use Andy, cause that's the role he's playing, and Andy says, we're gonna wear blue shirts on Friday, and Seth comes on and says, no, we're gonna wear green, that's a very simplification, but you can't, no, you can't do that. It has to all work together, but again, like I said, an elected official is not necessarily capable of managing, because now you're asking for a bachelor of science and a CPA and whatever, so we do need that administrator. And it's like, one of my passions is a community home for this area. So I'm out there talking and whatever, trying to get alliances together, but Andy's the one that's gonna have to come to me and say, we have this amount of money and stuff, I don't have that capability. That is what, and so we do need that administrator, but as commissioners, we have to really there's a line we have to walk, and I totally agree with Brian, we can't we can't be overseeing what he's, he has worked on. And I think we're, I mean, I think we're getting there, I think we're getting a little bit think, I think we've kind of got it balanced out a little bit more, I think it's working, so, I mean, I'm not saying we can't improve, we definitely can improve, but I do, I totally agree with both of them. But we're gonna have to be very, very careful on how that is handed. And we're gonna have to, you know, and again, he's the guy that's gonna make it work. Just like the justice center, you know, you need someone that's gonna be out there and then figuring all that financial and all of that out. We have a cap, we have passions, we have capabilities, but that capability may not reach to that particular project, and that's why we're hiring that person. Because he's supposed to have, or she, I'm not being feminist here, he or she has that capability.
But, you know, you're also in all those meetings, you're involved, you're engaged, you're working through that process, and I, I think that's exactly what we're talking about, is having somebody there to heighten our ability to manage the county. Not to, to do, I mean, you wouldn't want Andy to take over all the meetings that you are in with the Justice Center, right?
Well, I, you know, when we had Nick, Nick was, I was still sitting in all the meetings, but he was you know, he was doing
Yeah.
a whole lot of work, um, you know, I'm, I'm still actively engaged in it, but there was that helping hand, uh, that helping hand was.
Totally, totally agree, we need a helping hand, we don't need that to be the hand.
Yeah, and, and the communications, I think the administrator has that capabilities of having the communication with all of us, whereas we don't have that luxury.
No.
Uh, and to be legal, um, so I, you know, I think their communications improved.
No, and I, and I agree with you, it's just like me trying to visit all departments. It's hard. I mean, because you get people coming in and you have this, and you have meetings, it's very hard, so we do need that person that's communicating with all the departments, because we may not, I mean, not that we, I don't want to. I wish I could go visit every department every week, but it's, there's only so much time, and whatever, and that again is Andy's, you know, he's facilitating, and it's just like this morning, I wanted to talk to him about a subject that I'm not versed in, and now I've got he knows the versing, and he kinda brought me up on board, and now I'm able to go and chat with this individual and have a little bit more knowledge base, and we need that, I mean, I didn't really come on board thinking that we maybe needed one, but I'm a firm, like I had said at the last meeting, I'm a firm believer in what he does and what he accomplishes, and he brings us a professionalism that is needed. Because elected is elected, and we don't know who the next round will be, or whatever. So, yeah.
I think that stability is what the department has.
Oh, yes, and, and again, if a department is having problems with Andy, I'd hope that they'd come to one of us, and we could be that moderating factor, because event, I mean, eventually, I guess, as, as Jerry kept telling me, you're the boss, Suzie, so I guess we're the boss.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I, I do think we need to move on this, I think we need to put this out, and we need to advertise, because I don't think the person may not magically show up in a month or two months. And then I would like to see that person with Andy for several months. And so I really need to, I think we need to move on this, and I think we need to come up with a job description. Now, this is the job description that, uh, is for uh, Prineville. Uh, you know, I'm not saying we have to mimic Prineville, but again, there's a lot, a lot there that we can look at and come up with, and then of course, Andy's put in his, uh, you know, somewhere in these papers is your description, so are on your chart here. But I think we need to work through this, and I think we need to get it out there.
Yeah, a-again, as long as it's a support role, then I'm, I'm totally on board.
And I also think.
More than that, I'm, I'm very.
Yeah, before we put this out there, I feel it would be important for us to possibly do something with the newspaper. And to talk about that we are going to be maybe advertising for this job, and just do a little bit of self-education so that people really realize what we're doing. We did the three meetings, but maybe we do some sort of a press release, just a public, a PR effort. I think that would be very important too, and I think we, you know, put, make it very open, very open, and I, I feel that your support versus your helping hand is gonna come from those commissioners. I think that that's our job to do that and to say, no, Randy, I wanna, you know, like I say, he hasn't told me no yet, but I think he did tell me no the other day, but but you know what I'm saying, I think that also comes from the commissioners.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, I think that just has to be clearly defined within the job roles, the supportive role.
Yeah, I think that totally comes from who you get in that elected position.
And there may be people that aren't interested in being engaged, and then that's up to them, and.
Yes, and they're elected, and that's their, that's their freebie, but again.
Not get elected again, or they may not, yeah.
Yeah, they may be hung by the sheep herders, they're hung over on the bridge, but like I say, that's, that comes from that elected official.
Yeah.
And that's something we can't, we can't, uh, put qualities or whatever, that is what the populace wants. But this person we can, and I feel as, as support, we definitely need it in the county, we're a business. And we need to run this as a business, and I think that we need to move on this, and I think we need to move on it more quickly than than waiting. Is there any other comment from anyone else? Tim has his hand up.
He's had it for a while.
Tim, are you tired of holding your hand up?
I just hold on, but.
Sorry, forgot to take it down.
Okay, well, hope your arm isn't sore.
Okay, yeah.
So I'm not sure what actions do we need to go over your your thing, do we need you to write up possibly what we wanna put as a job description? And then we go through that, what is the next steps to get this on mode, get this moving?
Well, just back up a little bit. I work for all three of you.
Yes.
As a body. Not individually. Right?
Yes.
So I don't take direction from anyone.
Sure.
It's from the group, and so I'm working from that parameter, and if I find I'm being asked to do something that I believe is contrary to the direction I'm gonna say no, or we have that constraint.
Which you shouldn't.
Yeah, and that's what a leader does. A support staff just does. This position is not meant to be a support staff role. So, if you want a support staff role, you need a different position, and that's gonna look a whole lot different than what it's been.
And I again believe that that comes from the commissioner. I, I think you're saying support, I get what you're saying. I I think you're saying support, I get what you're saying, Seth, but I think that comes from the individual commissioner. So I totally agree with what you're saying, and yes, he has to have. Power to move it, but I think that comes from how active we individually want to be. And that can't be measured, that can't be a metric because that is, it's an elected official, but yes, you have to have the power. I agree that, yes.
And there, you know, right now, there is no limitation on you talking with staff. It's just, you know, a common courtesy if you are talking with staff, and I'm aware that you're having that conversation. The agreement was, again, there's no direction coming from anyone. Yeah, and you know, Seth and I've had these conversations and. He wants to provide some direction and to say, yeah, that's fine, let them know we've talked and that's good with that direction. That works, that looks okay. You know, the, where it's gonna get really. Untenable would be if. We have somebody providing on the board, providing direction. Because then we're gonna get into a situation, maybe we don't have it now, but it can happen when you see a change. Or you see we had an issue that you have passion about, that you want it to be that way, and the other two don't want it to be that way. Now we're getting direction, let's say from Suzy to go do this. You know, with an employee. So anytime you have any one of the three of you getting into providing that direction, it's not gonna end up in this confused state and then it's gonna become. We'll wait for direction, and I'm dealing with enough of that right now. I'm dealing with like some communications right now that should just be automatically have been done, taken care of, but they're waiting for me to tell them to go ahead. And it's that lack of them understanding you have that authority, you don't need me, that's part of your job. And that's where this person would get to be because they're uncertain. What do they, what can they do, not do?
Shouldn't that be brought into a work session where we're sitting here all together and talk? Shouldn't that be your discretion is if you feel you're getting. Direction like I'm pressuring you or whatever, shouldn't then that be put into that work session and be discussed? And be be voted on and I get voted down, they vote again, and then that's.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So I mean, is that maybe a little bit of a lack on your side because when you get into this, this problem, it should be brought, I'm assuming legally, Eric. To the work session and it's discussed and then it's voted and then that's the way it goes. I mean, in my, I mean, don't you, I mean, isn't that the ethically way to do it?
So the short answer is yes, but that hasn't been how it's worked. So I can think of one instance, for instance, when um, our office was asked to work on a project and we had two diametrically opposed. Directions of how to resolve it. And there was no deadline, or there was a short deadline. And there was no opportunity for me to resolve that. Uh, before the deadline passed. So what ended up happening in that instance was we prepared two diametrically opposed documents. To be presented to the commissioners for the commissioners to act on. Uh, that was a tremendous amount of work. That was really giving the way to square that circle. Because there was not going to be a meeting. Um, but we did have these conflicting directions. Uh, and the expectation from the people giving the directions was do what I tell you. And um. That was a very awkward position for us to be in. So if there was the discipline to say, when we have these disagreements, that means there's a meeting. And sometimes that means the project doesn't get done because the meeting can't happen before the deadline. There has not always been that discipline. And I think Andy's right. I think um. The role of the administrator needs to answer to the board. And that means an understanding of not just you three, but your successors. The board means all three, or at least a quorum of three.
Sure.
And that has not always. That understanding may get lip service, but it hasn't been honored.
But yeah, I I, Suzy, I agree to your point. It's, that's how we've always done it. If we want to move forward with something. And everybody's generally on board, we move forward, but if there's a contention, then we we go through a process of of. Having a meeting, a public meeting and making that decision, right? We want to continue that process.
No, I agree, and but I I'm turning to empower. That you are giving a certain, you have to give away a certain amount of power to this. Administrator, you have to. That's just the way it's gonna work. And then he facilitate, we, we basically kind of facilitate his job, he facilitates our job. And it's just like I say, I'd love to be able to go see every department every week, but that's not gonna happen. It just isn't realistic. So Andy, or. I'm gonna just say Andy, Andy has to have that power. That's what he has to do, and I don't think we should divide up. I don't think we necessarily should divide up and I take Rhodes and landfill and. Brian takes whatever. I think we need to be an all-round board of commissioners. Because just because I'm in Rhodes, maybe Brad doesn't really care for me. Uh, you know, I, he doesn't know me quite yet, but I'm just using you, Brad, as an example. But he really clicks with Brian.
Yeah.
So Brian should be who you go to. You go to who you click with, you know, and yeah.
Yeah, no, I told you.
So I, I, but you have to have the power to be able to act and and that.
And support the county court.
Yes, yes, I think it's a two-way street. We have to support you as administrator. And he supports us as commissioners, and if there is a problem. And one of us is, I don't know what you're strong on in you, then it needs to come to a work session, and if the project doesn't get done, then it doesn't get done, but it has to be resolved in a right, in the right way. Rules are rules. And as we get more professional and as this county grows, we need to pay more attention to. Our rules. And like you say, it's there, but it hasn't been honored. Maybe we need to all step up and honor that and be reminded. Very easy to go back to basically.
And this goes much deeper than to me and it goes to the directors because if they believe that there's this. Inability or the ability to stir the administrator, that's gonna happen. Uh, that can go below the director and go down into the staff to where they're going around, you know, to get stuff done as well versus going through, you know, the typical chain. It's bringing professionalism to this organization, and that's been something that's, that was the original task of coming in here to do that and. Again, there's no prohibition, you know, of you or any of you, or I think we encourage to talk to all. Of, you know, the the staff and get to know all of the department heads and so forth. Not the liaison, because again, you know, it's invites the shopping before the approval. I mean, that's, you know. I don't get it from Andy, because again, I'm representing all three of you. This is where I understand we're going. This is what I think is gonna work best. And that's a lot of conversation with each of the department heads over, you know, particularly if there's disagreement on what we might want to do, but for the most part. I'm generally finding a way to support the departments and what they're trying to do. And we discuss the different options. If we need to bring that back. You know, there's cases, you know, I know, you know, talking with Will and and others where go talk with Seth. I know he has some concerns about that particular item. Or if it's the wolf, then go talk with with you on that, right? And so there's, as you said, a facilitation that takes place to try and get this all worked out. Working as a team so that when we are bringing these things forward, we've addressed, I think, most people's concerns that we're getting three O votes. And we're going forward and we're all going in the same direction as opposed to. Taking flares, rabbit trails, you know, here and there and. And without a work plan and it's very difficult. I mean, if we're always in this reactive mode as opposed to getting ahead of the curve. And we've been, you know, Sarah and I, you know, talking a lot about how do we get ahead to where we're not scrambling all the time. Seems like two steps forward or a step forward, two steps back and and. The whole purpose of my role in all this is to help get through all of that so that when you do recruit. For the position, you've got most of that stuff worked out because there's nobody that's gonna come into what. We've been working on in the last, you know, eight months. It actually goes, you know, beyond that. It's been, you know, over a year. No one's gonna step into this with the situation as it exists now and. Live with it. They would, you know, they would do the due diligence upfront. They wouldn't accept the job. They'd move on. We've seen that already, you know, with a couple of positions, uh, you know, in the county. At a high enough level that they see, you know, the situation, you know, as it exists presently, they want to see that stabilized. The department heads want to see it stabilized. The organization wants to see it stabilized. And so that needs to get, you know, accomplished. Then the recruitment, I think, has some chance of success, and I mean, the last thing I'd want to do is have you go recruit this, it not be ready. Fill it and then it implodes. Yeah, and that's my biggest fear is recruiting somebody in here that's gonna be able to. Step in and be able to even with three, four months of, you know, some mentoring and help and getting them all up to speed. There's a lot going on and there is disagreement. In terms of how this works at the administrative level between the three of you. Seth has one view, you two, I think, have a different view. And that is an ongoing challenge and will be for anybody coming up. Until you can get it all hammered down and it's honored.
That job description needs to be exactly what it needs to be, so that this person makes them.
No, exactly, yeah.
Knows what's going on.
And also for us as your performance. We said you didn't. Color this box blue and you were supposed to. I mean, we need that also. So what is your, what is your next suggestion? What is, what is, what is your, as since you're acting in this, what is your next? You don't think we're ready yet? What is your next idea?
You know, I I'd suggest to you, you take the existing job description, look at that, what might you wanna see done?
Okay.
What's been done differently?
Okay.
And if you're needing uh, materials, um, say job descriptions that go beyond City of Primeville. I think I've got those materials, you know, you know, available on job descriptions for any one of those counties. Uh, that are listed, you know, there if you want to take a look at those. Uh, and you know, there's a mix of uh. Positions that you see in that schedule. I mean, you know, they go from, you know, a Director of Administrative Services. Uh, which is overseeing, you know, the. Finance and HR and IT. You have the administrative functions. You've got, you know. That level, I think that's the lowest level position that you see in that group all the way up to, you know, County Administrator slash Manager. And, you know, again, if you're looking for the consensus, you know, it started this was an executive level position. If it's to go to something lesser than that, such as a Director of Administrative Services, that's a far different role. That does involve the county court getting involved with oversight of the various departments and so forth. That's a whole different model. We haven't worked on implementing that model at all. So that would be a significant change in direction to where you're at. And I don't think that's what I'm hearing you or Brian say you support, but I think, you know, Seth might be good with that, you know. You know, it, that's more of a support function.
So I, you know, we have gone through these. Job descriptions all the way and you clean out with the three of us. Commissioner Ronaldis here and and. And state your goal, I call it, that was the mission you had to be. And I think that sometimes we're soon and you and go into the same. Paperwork and. Files and relations that we went through, as she needs probably be able to to look at that and ask some discussions with you.
Which was my next comment was do we need to do homework? And since you've already done it and Seth is, I mean, we need to do homework and I get a page and I just write. Life feels important for this job and then put it through together. So that's probably up there.
Yeah, and these are already show and they have H R.
I mean, the other thing is, since I've wrote that down, I've seen a lot of things and I probably would change some of those things, so I would like.
So maybe we all three need to just look at this material, write it down individually.
What our thoughts and actions.
Is that.
This is clearly a different place than we were at that point.
Yeah, and as I said, I think you're gonna see some divisions. And it's gonna be two, one in a lot of different areas.
Well, I mean, that's, that's what we have to, that's what we have to face, but yeah.
Yeah, but you need to, I mean, at the end of the day, be. And and I don't know that you're gonna be able to get to the same spot. I mean, we've been at this for a while now and I don't, I don't see resolution.
Got to. That's the point. We've got to. So we've all gotta look at this a little bit different and we've gotta put our thinking caps on and we all better comment on this because the biggest. The biggest important thing is, is when we walk out the door, we're arm in arm and we're united because that's what the county needs. So. Why don't we just do that? Why don't we go back? Look at all these things, write down maybe even importance, have an A column, a B column, a C column. And then uh, we'll get together, maybe not at county court, but maybe next work session. If you could place this on the agenda and then we come ahead and come to an agreement. Does that sound okay to you?
I think so, that I think there's value in you sitting down with Andy.
Oh, yes, I agree. No, and I agree.
So you can understand what all the history is.
Yeah, no, and I agree with you there.
And they're laid out, but different, not just the city of Primeville, but just the county and numerous others on what they do on.
Sure, well, he's got the different, yeah, counties. He's got, I was kind of looking at the one county. Is it Polk? That's kind of our population? Is that the one that's twenty-five? I can't remember.
Yeah, Polk's around sixty or so, but they have similar growth. That was why they were. They were brought in as, you know, they've got.
So you've got Curry Hood River and Jefferson and actually, well, you've got quite a few that are close. Polk is eighty-seven, so no, but I was kind of looking at your like. Populations and what they've done and, of course, we're at an eighteen percent growth rate. And God, we're not to shoot to twenty-six, so there's a lot of difference there. Jefferson is kind of a little bit mimicking us, but yeah. No, and you and I'll just get together and we'll do this and then you guys figure out what you like and then we'll figure it out. We gotta, we've gotta do it. We've gotta get together. We've gotta accomplish.
Yeah, and a big part of this is which we, you know. The next step, I mean, after getting this administrative thing figured out, was to go in and talk about the roles and responsibilities of board members.
Yes.
You know, and, you know, the judge, you know, or chair, wherever it is you're going, because again, the whole. Assignment here was to implement this and to move forward with the changing governance. That's the entire. Reason this moved forward and it's kind of got stalled on High Center here.
And that kind of lot depends on the governance.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
So we need to all just, yeah, take another look and do this and and then work it out again. Well, we'll keep but we're we're baby stepping it, but we're getting there. Are we all kind of in agreement?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay, and we take a five-minute break so I can, before the, while we get through the administrator and.
Yeah.
And then, uh, I'm gonna take a brief break to get Steve, uh, Waring and Steve Forster over here, okay?
And then I, oh, you wanna go first, Andy?
Sure, um, yeah, real quick. I met yesterday with uh, the consultant team, Jackie and Aaron out of Landfill. We went through, you know, kind of. Big picture, you know, what was hoped to be accomplished. We've asked them to plan on presenting to the court in a work session. I think that last meeting in March. Um, work session to present to you, kind of here's where this is all heading. Give back on that, make sure that, you know, before they get into the public process that you, you've got inputs into the direction and thinking and so forth. Um, and before that, I'll probably have some one-on-one conversation just to give you, you know, kind of an outline of some of the. Maybe areas that uh, wanna make sure you're aware of before, you know, they present it publicly.
And then Jackie, I asked City of Primeville to put her on the solid waste thing. Has she gotten any communication from them or you don't know anything?
Oh, I know that she and Jeff Merwin are the. Representatives that were looking to get appointed to the county, which of the city, Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Eric has looked at and he can elaborate further, uh, checked his memo. He's done some research on. Uh, the use of that type of committee and it looks like we may very well need an I G A looking with the city, you know, on that. Uh, Eric, did you wanna?
Yeah, I'll echo what Andy says. I don't see anything that would prevent the county from having its solid waste committee. Being within the city's quality committee. The question is, does the city want to do that?
They said that they had no problems and they were gonna add them to emails and whatever. That's what I was asking about when I brought it up. There was, they were. Very happy to do that. They thought it was, yeah, so there's no problem that way. It's just an actual problem getting it done, yes.
So then if they.
So then if they don't have any concerns, my suggestion is that we memorialize this with a, you know, governmental agreement.
Okay.
Then we have a piece of paper saying here is why we don't have a committee. Because we aren't working with their committee and then there is a clear delineation of responsibilities and roles between the two parts.
Okay, and so guess what? It looks like you got that job.
Yeah, uh.
I don't think stuff is wrong and they agree, but we need to, yes, we need to do that because we need to get Jackie on that and, and we need to figure that out. And Jeff, if we need Jeff too, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And Jeff, he's got tons of experience there and, you know, a big help. And the, the one thing that they do that we can't do is, you know, their meetings are not public. We've advised them that, you know, our meetings for this master planning process, you know, absolutely need to be, you know, public, publicly known itself. And they understand that, so I think, don't expect a problem there. Um, accrued leave.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt?
Sure.
So just so I'm making sure I can prioritize. How soon do we need to get this draft for the I T A to the city? Is this burning down the house? Is this?
No, the timing for their first meeting is the end of March.
Okay.
Uh, first part of April, so I think if we get this back. City approval, say mid-March, we can do it, uh, March twentieth of, you know, county court meeting, that'd be the absolute last data. Have it approved. Yeah.
Sorry.
Uh, crew leave, uh, remember the policy that you recently adopted last quarter, whatever. A lot to recognize prior experience. Comparable experience in positions for people that had been hired within the last ten years to go back in and recognize. That experience on one year for every two years of that experience and add that up to a maximum of five years county experience. We've done that for all employees working up in ten years, uh, with the, with the county. And seventy-four percent of employees, that accommodates. Uh, there's another twenty-six percent that don't, you know, those adjustments have all been made. Employees are in, finding that information today. There's, I know some questions out there about that and, you know, we'll respond to those and. You know, uh, that, I think one of the biggest questions is what are we doing for the folks that have been here more than ten years? And we're going to talk about that tomorrow at the, uh, department head meeting. Uh, one thing is. That we know what the impact is on the people that have impacted, which is, you know, a number of folks is. You know, Kim's looking at the number of individuals and it's a total forty-nine right now that are part of this group that haven't been impacted. Um, or not positively impacted, I should say, um, we will. I look to see how many of those individuals have worked, I believe. It's up to the maximum amount of vacation accrual and that's around sixteen or seventeen years of unemployment when you get to the maximum accrual. We'll go up and look and see how many of those individuals are seventeen, between ten and seventeen years. And I'm suspecting that's going to be seventy plus percent of.
Twenty-six percent.
You know, the twenty-six percent. So we'll be down to, you know, a small double digit. You know, type of numbers that are over, you know, max and have earning the maximum accrual. And the question is, what might we do for them since. We don't have an accrual about that. And I've sent out an email asking department heads to. Ask their employees, particularly in that situation, you know, what type of accommodation, what type of. Benefit might they see as a, an important one. So we'll get that, we'll have that, uh, hoping that your next work session. Yeah, for further dialogue, but I want to try and get that all resolved here, you know, in a timely fashion so that all employees ultimately. Recognizing that this is, it's an important thing to you for improvement retention. Okay, so in case you get any feedback from the folks that haven't been receiving a benefit or have questions about it. It's in progress and it's all hopefully done in a positive way. And for those employees that, you know, aren't seeing it in a positive way. That's disappointing. I mean, you know, because again, it's, we're definitely trying to get everybody with additional benefits to help. Help provide, do whatever we can in terms of recruitment retention and, you know, it's a process that takes a little bit of time to get those things done. Yeah, um, road department contract negotiations, Eric, I talked a little bit, Kim and I talked a little bit yesterday as well. Uh, that contract expires, uh, June thirtieth, uh, this year, um, gonna go ahead and. Scarcely get Bruce Fish off, myself, uh, Kim and Brad, uh, together for a meeting here, uh, in near term. Come up with a framework for how that, uh, would be put together. Would you, you know, have you guys get involved? And bring that back to an executive session at next week's court meeting.
And what is that?
Pardon?
What was that?
When?
What was that?
Road contract.
Road contract.
Yeah, the road, yeah, the road employee contract, yeah. Uh, COIC, now that things have settled a little bit. You know, we have a board seat on that board that's taken. They would like to see an appointment and if you were ready to move on that today, great, if not. If we could have that happen next Wednesday.
So is that, so COIC, that also includes, what was the one with transportation?
The STIP.
STIP and all that stuff?
Right.
So I, I think if you're interested, Susie, I think it would be a really good fit for you.
Okay, I won't be forcing Forrest anymore. Okay, I, I will accept. Okay, and I'll talk with you a little bit more about it.
Okay, do you need to have a motion second on that, um?
Yeah, I think that's probably best. So what I might suggest then is, uh, I'm voting on the court, well, does it need Commissioner Armory? Uh, to serve on the COIC board as discussed today.
Well, I don't know about that. I guess I got. We got a second.
Yes, I can say.
Thank you though.
So it's a good reason, let's go. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. So some good reasons.
Okay.
This is Tim. If I might remind the court that. I serve at your pleasure on the COIC Board of Directors as well, uh, representing Cork County in the Ag and Forestry arena. So Susie, I'll see you at their meeting.
Okay, and maybe you and I can have a little quick meeting before, or, you know, just kind of talk about what I'm jumping into here. So then I can run away to him.
Because that was his department.
Okay.
There's the chair.
Okay, all right, I can call Jerry. Okay.
Okay, uh, last thing is, you know, a big project for us is this H R I S, let's see, Human Resource Information Systems Project. We've got, uh, quite a few staff involved with that process, um. I'm going to go ahead and move forward with, uh, seeking some outside help with that, some professional project management help. Um, there's some, uh, additional work that we're going to need to do, Eric, and I've talked about, uh, you know, some of that related to. Uh, an individual that is interested in this work, there's some just extra groups we need to go through to make sure that, you know, we're. We're not, uh, stepping into some places we don't want to step into. So anyway, just, you know, give you a heads up on that and. That we'll be moving forward with that. The committee itself is looking to get the finalists done, um, next Tuesday. Is that right, Steve?
Decision by Friday, we're voting.
Yeah, they're voting and everything, but then you're going to have a meeting Tuesday to kind of review all that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. There was five submittals to an RFQ. We sent out, um. Solicitations to ten different vendors and we received five back and there were several that, you know. Gave a response that they declined to submit a, you know, a response, um. I think there's, there's certainly four that are comprehensive responses. Uh, one is a very limited, uh, response and we. Were on them, uh, to respond because they provide services right now to the sheriff's office for timekeeping and so forth. And we want to make sure that whatever they're doing. And where you can integrate with that or we can't integrate with that, that we have, whatever we're choosing is going to be able and they're on board with switching out. So there's a lot of, lot of work going on in that area, trying to make sure we're, you know, being all encompassing. We've got representation from the different departments that make up seventy-five percent of the employees that are on the evaluate, eval committee. Uh, we have the subject matter experts, Kim and Amy, Kathy Puckett and, uh, Stephen. That are subject matter experts. They are not part of the evaluation committee. They're to feed information and, uh, you know, answer questions and so forth to the process. So supporting the. Broad. Process, but it's one that HR, we know in the processes and everything that's going on with HR and how HR works. And all the different aspects of that. I mean, it touches every single employee and we want to make sure that we are listening to. What people are wanting to have the system ultimately do, how it does it and address as many questions as we can so that we can. You know, bring in a system that's going to have support without that support. And it's doomed to have a, a difficult time, you know, to, to come off the ground, so. That's, you know, just, so you guys know and, and, you know, if you hear feedback, know. You know, bring it, you know, back to me and we can, you know, talk about it, but, you know, just want to be aware of it. There's, you know, some feedback already goes, well, why didn't we get something from this company? Well, we submitted our RFQ to that company and they submitted back saying they declined to submit a proposal. So, so it's a good answer back to them, but that, uh, prevented, had we not done that, well, then that becomes. Well, why didn't we maybe submit to that? We're also, you know, clear the communication with them that if we can't find the ideal fit, what works, we can continue to search. So it's not a must, but as you all know, there is so much paper going on within HR. That is completely unnecessary, that is completely nineteen sixties, uh, you know, we need to. We need to make progress in this area and so, you know, having the outside professional make sure that we've got, you know, that expertise, you know, and. Implementing these systems onboard, help us out. We've got the budget to do that, so I think we're just at that point to go and bring it forward. Okay?
Thank you for your answers. I appreciate it very much.
Okay.
Very much. I think we need to.
I mean, that's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Uh, on my commissioner's report, uh, I meant to, I printed out a bunch of flyers, but I left them at home, uh. This is some flags. We're having, uh, a memorial come to town about the folks that lost their lives in nine eleven. And it's going to be going on across the street at the plaza. And so, uh, the people that have put that together have asked if we can have, um, if they can put the flags up in the grass at courthouse. Uh, makes sense to me, uh, I've checked up and they will have three per hour. Uh, they're watching it to make sure that we don't, uh. We don't end up with some vandalizing it or screwing those things up.
Lights on the flag? Yeah, I just wondered because one of the comments that I ever had was that my mother, we had four H M's and there wasn't a light on the flag. And I knew some veterans upon that. That was a bright.
I, I'm happy to ask them about that.
And, and they should, if they're doing this, they should know the problem. Because I'm not really worried about it, but that's just something that. To project a light at night is out of respect.
And we should get SNAF to donate, yeah, a light or something.
And you just ask. I mean, that's just like, say, no, I have no problem.
But I just wanted to run that by everybody.
That's very nice.
That was something that everybody was on board. The other one, uh, I got a call from Susie from COIC, COCC. To have somebody to be on the building committee, one of the, uh, court members to be on the, the COCC. You know, making sure that we've got enough money in there and kind of that partnership. And so, um, just to bring that up.
This is for the open campus.
Open campus, buddy. I'm, I'm happy to do it. Or Brian, if you want to. Either way, it's a one B a year, uh, with potentially one or.
Sure, we need to look at the guy.
Yeah, sure. You want it, you want this one too? You can do this one too, or just check it off.
Just throwing that comment out, that's all I wanted to do. I don't care about the rest though. I just want to turn that out. Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'm happy to be back to the.
Yeah, whichever you two can try to figure that out.
It's not super adept, and I think. It's, it's, it's pretty well figured out, so. Okay. Uh, oh, uh, also I'll be in Salem, uh, on Monday and Tuesday for the opening session with AOC. Uh, I'm on the executive committee, so, um. Think that could be helpful with the one-ten and some of these other things we're working on. In addition, there's some evenings with the legislators that I'm going to be able to. Have conversations and, and have push these issues that we're having, that I think both Republican and, so.
On that, if we got that email where we had to pay the fees, do we need to make a motion or anything for that? It was for AOC, it was.
Wasn't that E A O C?
Or was it? Oh, maybe I did.
Oh, was it AOC?
Yeah, I thought it was AOC.
I think if it's regular dues, we can, we just process it.
Okay, I didn't know it came and then I never asked anybody, so I just wondered, okay.
If you're going to meet with AOC, would you ask them to get on board and make a decision and quit being wishy-washy on measure one-ten?
I will, but I think that's an ineffective use of AOC, unfortunately.
Well, everyone else in the state is on board with it except for AOC.
Well, I have a theory that the reason that AOC is so marginalized in Salem. And I've told them this, I don't mind saying in a public meeting, is that they take these hardline issues and. Don't come down either way on them. And so then you, they, they're always so wishy-washy. And what they need to be doing is they need to be having. Issues that affect all counties and taking those, taking to the bank. Because those are the things that the entire organization can agree on. And then if you have that, we have every person under our umbrella in the association, every citizen in the state. And so everything we want, we should get done every time. But every time we come up with something where half the state agrees and half the state doesn't agree. Then we marginalize ourselves. And so, uh, that's where I'm really excited that they are giving individual commissioners. The ability to sit down with the actual legislators, so we can talk to them about what's actually happening where, where we live. And I think that's more what they should facilitate on these more, um, controversial issues. They should facilitate our ability to go talk to those legislators, but they need to stay out of that stuff. They need to, no matter how passionate we are, the other side's equally as passionate. And we're all members of one organization and until we come up with something that everybody agrees upon, then we're just. Spitting in the wind. So there's my answer to that.
We're going to circle all the firing squad.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
So is there public comment now or?
Um. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine to have it. I mean, I think that we decided that it was going to be prior to the meeting. And then during work sessions, there would not be public here input. And then at. Regular court sessions you would have before and during individual things, but I'm always happy to hear.
Okay. Um, concerning the conversation I went around about, um, job descriptions and so on and so on. And I'm all for that. But I think a decision needs to be made by. As to what job are we making a description for. Period. And that has to come in the form of a vote from the board in Florida's, and it's first. Are we or are we not going to have an administrative position? Number two, um, as far as the change of governance in the cabinet. Well, they may find all for educating the people and having to vote. But if you take everything into consideration, you do not have the ability and or the time to educate people. That can make a good, honest, knowledgeable vote. So once again, I believe that's a decision that the board is going to make. They vote as to where to go with, whenever the sun is in. Secondly, Suzie, you talked about, uh. The wildlife damage management, there's an easy to come in, uh, in September. Isn't that easy? You're listed fire that I saw for September fifteenth.
No, that's a different situation. So February eighth is basically the ranchers and the producers getting. Getting with the, the board of the Wolf Committee and then on the fifteenth is. getting with the, the board of the wolf committee. And then on the fifteenth is wrenching with wolves by
OSU extension is sort of on a, uh, education class with John Williams, the most CA.
Yeah, so it's two separate.
I didn't know about that.
Yeah, it's two separate things, but they have an advertising liquid pamphlet or a little, kind of a little logo kind of thing on the ranching with wolves, but our regular wolf committee is February eighth.
I think Tim has also already, we have, you know.
Hello, Tim.
Start time, Tim?
It's our best time.
Yes, thanks for, and a little extra time. Back to, uh, the COCC appointment uh, for the annual discussions historically again. Uh, the treasurer and myself and the county commissioner sat on that committee representing the county sort of the management, the funding and then decision-making. Uh, last year, uh, it was Jerry, Andy and myself that met with the COCC leadership group that manages that building and to Seth, I guess I just wonder if Suzie mentioned uh, if that's the structure they wanna continue in the future or are they just, uh, wanna meet with a commissioner?
No, I think that's, that, I think she was just looking which one of the commissioners would be part of that system.
And I could do, I mean, I'm more than
No, no, Suzie is
No, I understand Suzie's the director, but if Jerry was on that and you want me to do, that's fine too. I, I'm totally
No, I'm, I'm totally, I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't make a difference to me. I just wanted to get my comment in.
Yeah. Thanks, Tim.
But I think that same committee with Tim and
Yeah, Tim and, yeah.
Andy is serving as the administrator and, and the commission.
Yeah, we, I mean, we set a framework for that, um, you know, and, and this gets into the change thing. And we've changed how we're structured and wanting to operate like it's always been and I mean, if, gonna send, I don't need to be at a meeting that says at a meeting, I mean, I'm trying to figure out how to be most efficient and it is very inefficient to be sending two people when one person's necessary. So I, you know, we've got a framework that we agreed to last year with, uh, COCC, uh, to what the funding would look like and so forth. The dollars involved with this are, from a countywide perspective, are fairly small. Um, what I'm trying to do is to give an appropriate amount of time to that, not a ton of time to it, enough to keep it going the way it's, and was set up organization. And I can bring back what that is and how that works, you know, budgetarily. I did get a communication from Suzie, uh, responded to, you know, in terms of where are we with the balance of dollars, et cetera, in the fund, in these reserve accounts. And then the operations of that. You know, we had laid out that framework like said last year, COIC, or excuse me, the community college was to look at that as relates to they had an IT study that was ongoing to figure out what was it supposed to be costing on an annual basis. Cause there was no plan. I mean, everything was just, again, reactionary and we laid out, we need to have a plan, how that's going to work, what is that cost? Bring that back, then we can figure out the funding on an ongoing basis. So hopefully we have that information, you know, from them as we go forward with, you know, the funding decisions.
Yeah, I would disagree with Andy. I think that there is value to have commissioners and view it in the interest. I think there's things that each one of us bring to the table. And that's where I, that's where I'm going in with the position of support versus taking over all of the meetings and all these different things. And I think even with the department heads, because if, if we just sit here and, no offense, uh, cause I don't think you would do something unthwart, but take your word on it. And that puts us in a much worse position of making decisions. And I think being part of that conversation that you have with those department heads individually is extremely helpful for us to make decisions. And that's, that's where I'm talking about the support level. And having the ability to be part of those conversations and not just get a report at the end of the day and then make a decision on one side of what we per And so I, so I, that's what goes to what I'm talking about. In this position to support the county, make decisions, not just be the one that makes those decisions. So.
Yeah, again, the decision is ultimately the three of you, not one of you. And that's the, the challenge.
Right, and, but that's the importance that you mean there because some of those meetings have a tendency to go off in different directions and have repercussions that have to have some substantial, um, good for the county. And we need to be aware of those.
Yeah, and if there's, I mean, again, if there's controversy, absolute, you know, bringing you guys in. If it's a regular business thing of, we're all on the same page. I'm just saying, I'm not sure that's the best use of having one of you guys, you know, one of you, you know, show up. I mean, you know, if there, if there's value to it, you know, and you really wanna be there, you know, great, but, you know, I'm trying to value your time too. There's a lot of other areas that need attention in in the organization that, if that's one that's handled, it seems like there's other areas maybe that we can be talking about. You know, and again, that's how to work as a team and not be tripping over each other to get stuff done. You know, that's, I think, the, the key piece here.
All right, anything else before we move to executive session?
Can we get, are we taking a five-minute break?
Yeah, that's good.